Okay, we're gonna go on to KPWA side since Dale's here first. It is six thirty-two. Call to order, this is a regular meeting, January thirteenth, two thousand twenty. Colorado.
Hockabye.
Yes.
Burton.
Yes.
Carey. Sweeten.
Yes.
McCormick.
Yes.
All right, let's go ahead and do the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Number three, discuss and approve all minutes for December twelfth, two thousand nineteen.
I vote that we approve those minutes, I've already seen them there, I don't know about the rest of you.
I'll R K close out, Kelly, please.
Hockabye.
Yes.
Burton.
Yes.
Carey.
Yes.
Sweeten.
Yes.
McCormick.
Yes.
Uh, number four, discuss and approve December two thousand nineteen bills for water funds.
Yes, I've seen those too, I will, uh, finish for that too.
Hockabye.
Yes.
Burton.
Yes.
Carey.
Yes.
Sweeten.
Yes.
McCormick.
Yes. Number five, discuss and approve December two thousand nineteen bills for sewer funds.
I make the motion, we approve. You second, Doc?
Yeah.
Hockabye.
Yes.
Burton.
Yes.
Carey.
Yes.
Sweeten.
Yes.
McCormick.
Yes. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and jump to number eight, uh, Dale's here to give us a update on the Zuma projects.
Yeah, KPWA said, yes. It's okay, we'll sit down.
Go ahead.
My name's Dale Burke, for y'all that don't know me, I'm from Infrastructure Solutions Group. If you look at the last page on the handout that I just, just gave, uh, we went through, uh, we were identified of some additional land that may be available to do the, the sewer system on. It was directly north of the wastewater treatment plant itself now, and as you can see from the, the sketch, that piece of land will do what we need it to do.
Better than the other? Or as well?
Probably better because it's less maintenance, there's less sprinkler heads to deal, deal with and everything else. There's only two on this one, we probably had, I'm going off the memory here, we probably had six on the other one.
That's what I was thinking, that we had talked about that.
Right, right, so, so this is, it handles a lot flatter, okay, so, so, so it's, it's a better piece of land as far as the community goes, okay? One of the things that, that we wanted to look at is what would be the cost, the capital cost, to get that, that land, land available and how would we fund it? If you look on the very first page, we were talking about breaking this thing up into two, two phases. One is apply for a CDBG grant, and we've actually spoken to the Choctaw Nation about IHS funds, okay? And at the bottom of that, that table, you see the funding source, okay? Uh, we had to put down some city funds there simply because we are very conservative on our cost estimate, okay? But we wanted you to know there's a possibility of a being cut a thousand or so that we contributed out of the city funds, okay?
Maybe we might be short that much.
Right, right. Uh, again, this is just a cost estimate, we won't know until we bid the project out exactly, exactly how much it would cost. We don't know about CDBG grant, okay, uh, you know, there's four hundred thousand there, and IHS. IHS grant is, is, is awarded upon the percentage of Native American homes in the city.
There's quite a few here.
Quite a few, and, and like I said, we've already talked to the Choctaw Nation, I think there was a little over fifteen percent if I remember right. So, that would be phase one, that would get the system over there, that would get us functioning, okay? And then phase two, we would apply for an OWRB re-grant, and that is to put the, the second, the second, fifth, fifth, I mean, okay? We could probably get some Choctaw money associated with this too, and do some other improvements as far as the wastewater system goes, like the lift station, we got some leads over on the lift station, some other things, but this is just a general look, okay? There's, there's more detail that has to be done, of course, when we get to it, but I see it as a, a feasible piece of property.
And when could we get started once we get all this lined out, everything?
Uh, I, I, the CDBG grants are due April the first, okay? Uh, I would say that's when we need to get started on this.
Okay, when?
Apply for the grant.
Uh, okay, what are we gonna need to apply for these grants?
Uh, there, 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 there's really, you gotta, a, a grant administrator to look at it, okay? But the thing you really need is your audits.
Okay, that's, that's what I was wondering about, if that's what, all through is the last happens.
If you don't have the audits, you can't even apply.
That's what, that's what we were told, after we got all the paperwork done and everything.
You're under a consent order, okay? So, you know, you get ten points for, for that, makes you very competitive, but, you know, the last time I don't think we got to apply because the audits were not done.
Right, that's exactly what happens.
I have a lot.
How long is this laying out?
Uh, I believe the gentleman's name is.
Gary Bishop.
And I think he actually came to the city, right?
Yes.
He actually came to it right after I was able to deal with Wilma Carey was done, but it was already adopted by the state.
Has he agreed to sell the land?
We're, we're not selling it, we would only be, be leasing the land, but I don't think he's, he's really interested in giving any money to the city.
It's more or less, more or less what he was wanting is all the water we can give him.
Right.
We don't even have to do a lease agreement with him or nothing like that, but he, we've gotta do a, do a lease agreement, but.
No money.
No money such exchange, we put the pivots over there for all the water we can give him.
How many properties do you got that want water on it?
This is an area.
And what they got that he want water?
Hey.
Hay, for the hay, for instance.
The, the water that we would be putting on, on it's very high in nutrients, the girls hate very well.
That's what he needs for his cattle.
That's correct.
So from a cost wise, it's free?
Yes.
Right, well, I wish that we'd have done this in the first place, it would have so much more sense.
Zero.
I know, but how much would we normally charge for lease, I mean, they would charge.
We're paying Wilma right now, four thousand, we gave her sign on, and then four thousand here, but it's fixing to go up to.
Six.
Five, five.
So you're looking at four, oh yeah, that makes sense, I was just like, how much?
And we paid three years before we really should have ever.
Yeah, that makes sense, like three or four years. Well, that would, I'm just saying, the water's expensive around here for us, like how much?
But that water would have happened on Wilma's land too.
Yeah.
Right, 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 so I, I was just curious on the numbers, that's all.
And we're already pretty close to halfway through the lease agreement with our.
But I don't think the contract was already, I mean, that's been several years ago that was drawn up, nobody on here really.
And that's raving on the council when they did that.
At the time, it was the only property that we could find.
Right.
Okay. I think the one he was, was the mayor at, at that point.
Yes, sir.
We went over and looked at two or three other places, but the slope has, has to be at a certain.
Angle?
Angle, so that the water doesn't run off, it soaks into the ground.
Right.
So that kinda limited us where we, where we could do it, I don't guess this piece of property was available at that time, but no.
Well, he didn't know about it.
He, he wasn't talking about it at the time.
He wasn't talking about it at the time, I'm sure he would have offered sooner than what he did.
So, as far as the engineering side goes, it's, it's an acceptable piece of property, and I think causing the rolling in is a better piece of property.
That sounds good, thanks.
Everything sounds good, may I, I mean, we just, we just gotta get everything else going to where we can get all the supplies for.
Now, April the first, I'm sorry, April the first is the deadline, turn in the application, but the audit needs to be done, you know?
Have you heard from us? On the, it's not, he's not looking for the state audit, so we finished the seventeen audit at the end of October. She still hasn't come in and did all the adjustments for us to even get started on eighteen nineteen, so we're probably gonna use her, the same auditor that did that seventeen eighteen, cause all she'll do is she'll roll her numbers forward, and she's already said that we're gonna get rid of, roping up, writ, written up for the same thing we got roped up before, cause we didn't know about it. So we went through eighteen, nineteen without knowing about seventeen, eighteen, so I think what we're gonna end up doing is just make, letting them do the audit, so all they gotta do is look at the current invoices and roll it forward from what they've got.
Does she know the timetable, are they gonna be able to do it by then?
Um, I've got a call in, so I'll, probably tomorrow afternoon, I'll be able to talk to her, but, uh, she should be able to do it once we, we're waiting on some file cabinets too, because we got some stuff in there that we've got to get filed so that I can get her the stuff, but yeah, but I think we're just gonna stick with, I mean, stick with that same monitor, so, know what the adjustments are, she's already got the ending balances with the right number, she's not come down here and had us update our system yet, so I think it would just, you, you couldn't hire the new one and get it done. I think you can hire the old one and get it done.
Well, time is gonna fly by pretty fast, so we need to get on this as soon as we can, for sure.
She's, I mean, for example, I mean, the fire department, I mean, she already knows she can't get the records from the fire department, so she's not even gonna ask. She's gonna write us up again for not having records from the fire department, so I mean, instead of spending time waiting on them, she ain't gonna try, so, it's probably what we need to do.
And that's the only thing, uh, David Roberts is waiting on too, is, uh, he's got the application already written up.
Right.
He's, he's on the ball already, he's just waiting on us to get the okay to.
Right.
Get it sent in. Yeah, he's just waiting on the audit too. And that's, that's the only thing, we're really waiting on his audit.
Cause it took us, we didn't get our seventeen, eighteen back until October twenty-sixth, I guess it was November's council meeting that got approved, I mean.
September the twelfth was the deadline.
That was seventeen and eighteen audit.
Yeah.
So.
Was the deadline on that?
I would just encourage that the council do whatever it took to get them on board and try to get that audit done ASAP, I, I, you know, it's a four hundred thousand dollars, yes. And, and of course, there's no guarantee of this, but you know you won't get it if you don't apply.
Yeah.
That's a guaranteed number, yeah.
Until we get everything you want, no.
Well, if we get it done ahead of time, that would be even better, if we got the audits ahead of time, ready to go, it'd be heck a lot better. Wait till the last minute, being in a pinch.
I think you would be under pressure to get them done this year if she hadn't started yet.
Yeah. Well, I guess.
Let's go ahead and use those, others and bring them forwards.
I guess we'll just wait until she hears back from them, I guess, to then.
I'm gonna call her back, just with the holidays, her finishing right before Thanksgiving and then the holidays.
It's got everything behind.
I wouldn't encourage it, if she needed an agreement to get started on it, you call a special meeting. You can be the only thing on her, but you can't, if you delay it thirty days.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, we delay it thirty days, it's gonna delay everything else, so, all right.
Yeah, let's just get it done as soon as we can. Was the DEQ and the EQ, uh, EPA, are they on our case because we haven't got this done?
Oh yeah, yeah.
Are they finding us, or what are they gonna think that we're working on it?
Not yet, not, not yet.
So they are giving us time to work, they can though.
Last year, you know, last year, we, we told them we would apply for CDBG, but because of the audit.
Right.
If it happens again, okay, it might not be a good thing, okay, they might legislate one more time, but more and more, it, it, you know, I mean.
We need to get it done now.
We need to get it done.
I think so, that's what I, I've been thinking about that, and I was wondering, well, is EPA, that DEQ wanna get all of our case if we don't get this done pretty quick?
They probably won't, yes.
So it's a good idea, go ahead and do it.
You don't know, uh, you, you know, and typically, you know, even if you don't get the CDBG this year, as long as you apply for it, DEQC sees you're applying for it.
They know we're making an effort.
You're making an effort, that's, that's right. When they, when they, when they get a little upset is when you don't even try to solve the issue.
Right.
And that's nothing on the city, if you don't have the audit, you don't have the audits, but. That's all I got, let's see, does anybody have any questions?
Would you just get a contract done with Gary Bishop?
I'm sorry?
Get a contractor in that.
I would, I would, I mean, it's, as far as you, as, as far as we've been told.
No, we'll have to wait for a special meeting.
And, you know, get your attorney to look at it, okay, and, you know.
All right, sounds good.
Thank you very much for coming.
You bet.
Yes, thank you.
We got what's going on.
So do we want to go to KPWA side?
Well, yeah, we have to, we have to. Okay, number six, discuss and vote to remove Kenny Carey from all senior cards from the town of Kewada for the first national. Frankish digger, okay, this was tabled from December meeting. Yeah, and this is KPWA, I think we, we went ahead and voted on that on the city side that time.
And you know what, I did not remember this, this card here, until I seen the tender post on the door the day, I thought, I thought we voted on both.
Nope, somebody agreed to table this one here, and, but we voted on it not to do it on the town side.
I eat too much Thanksgiving.
I mean, we need to go ahead and vote on it. Vote on it.
This, let's say town of Kewada, so KPWA, so you need to either not do it now, or amend it or something, is the wrong.
Oh yeah, yeah, this is KPWA side, this is town of Kewada. What do we gotta make an amendment on it, cause it's on KPWA side and not town of Kewada side?
I think we need to assess for the town of Kewada.
On the town of Kewada, the last time, y'all just said no action.
I think that probably is just a misinterpretation.
Right, and then in KPWA, y'all tabled it.
The town of Kewada said of KPWA, so it still needs to be voted on, seems to be amended first, the amended part, so then.
Call it be no action, but if we're gonna amend it, it would have to be only the water department, it couldn't be for, from all senior cards or anything, end up being from.
Anything, yeah, anything related to KPWA, that counts.
Or, or, uh, no action.
So we're just gonna let her keep her name on all the bank cards? Well, here's the question, is if you don't amend it, and then you just bring it up every month, every month, that's just dragging it out. You can't do that, cause once you title it, you have to bring it up the next month and discuss it. Right, so if we amend it and then vote on it for, then it's done, it's just.
Make it take no action, or you don't get it with the my go.
But then it can't come back up. Needs to be taken care of, though.
Well, if it can't be as, the way, I mean, it would have to be amended, and it would only be KPWA, it wouldn't be all the senior cards.
Right.
If it was amended, it would only be here for the home water.
Right, right, and then you have it on the other one, you can do that.
Number six, so.
I thought we took the same action, it's, I didn't make this. Well, someone needs to do something. How about, so. Since you said I was thinking, sorry that, uh-huh. The meeting went on forever, we were so tired, by the time we got to this, we just said, hide it.
Well, we, we did the same thing as we did on the town side last month, no action.
Say no action on it?
So we're just gonna let her keep her name on all the bank cards?
Well, we did on the other side, we did on the other side.
But isn't it on the next week, so it can move up back up? No, it can't. No, because they said no action last time. And they, the bank guys have the. It wasn't on the last one, because it was only tabled on the KPWA. I've taken all the, I've taken three, seven minutes.
Take no action, no action.
Minutes up there, three minutes. So, yeah, I've just seen it's not on three, so.
She's on it, but she don't have the house.
All right, let's move on, number seven, discuss and vote to terminate the agreement with Kenny Carey for the land that we're mortgaging the project.
I'll move, please, terminate the agreement.
Well, does she know it's like, you don't actually, you can be real, have letters on these things, we don't.
We, we can, we can let her know that we're gonna terminate it without.
Yeah, you'd have to vote to terminate it first and then let her know now. Oh, really? Well, I thought she. Because you couldn't let her know if it hadn't been voted on, though. What's there to defend about that?
You vote to, like, decide that that's what you wanna do, and then we take steps to do that, whether or not, I mean, we have to go.
Oh, okay, no, yeah. I just wanna be sure that we're doing the right thing. Okay, well.
That's what he was just talking about, that, that man, is that it's gonna be a lot better to do it on that other property.
Yeah. I just wish we'd known this, we didn't, we'd have saved a lot of problems, yeah, okay, who made, who wants to make the motion?
Don't do it.
Who made the motion, I'll second it then.
Hockabye.
Yes.
Burton.
Yes.
Carey.
Santa. Yes.
Just a little legal ignorance here, y'all need to realize too, that this is not, the lease is not terminated as of this day, y'all are voting to terminate it, we'll go over and talk to them, and then actually terminate it with the paper, okay?
So when is it gonna be terminated?
Whenever I get that thing done, and we give Wilma notice of everything.
Okay, until then, it's still.
Y'all are just organizing pretty much me to do that.
Okay, all right, I'm glad you made that clear, right.
Okay, number nine, going to, vote to go in the executive session for call twenty-five, or this section on three, three oh seven B, discuss the employment hiring improvement, promotion, demotion, discipline for reassigning of any original salary, public officer of employee, to discuss the annual performance review and pay increase for city employees. This was tabled in December meeting, review ninety day performance for city employees, review ninety day performance for city employee.
Did we have that ninety day?
Uh, no, yeah, this last month was about Doug's.
This one here is for.
And this and here now, they've got Sharon and, uh, uh, Cheryl and on this one too. I thought we should have separated this though.
Y'all know we're all been here a year, right?
Sounds like why we're not. Well, I make the motion that we go into executive session and discuss all this.
Well, they separated their own individual.
Yeah, but I mean, it's, it's all together here, but I guess that's okay.
That's what we did last time, cause we didn't wanna have Doug's go in, vote on that.
Well, I make the motion, we go into executive session then. City employees, so.
Hockabye.
All on what?
Uh, the way it says it was tabled from December meeting, I don't think it was safe.
Was tabled, was the one, was Doug's, right, that's what I, that's what I was getting at.
Yeah, but y'all voted too, two of you voted to give Doug a raise, didn't you?
No, no, because we needed, uh.
They were waiting on, they needed. The minutes said it was tabled.
We were waiting on, on some information as to. Something about.
You can't divulge any information.
Oh, right, I know, I know. Anyway, we will wait and see.
But the minutes said it was tabled, not voted on, okay.
Right.
It says in parentheses, this was tabled at December meetings.
It was.
I'll move to amend it then, uh, to, for city employees, as it is, primitive now, from, uh, just Doug to all city employees.
Okay.
I'll second it.
This is for amendment, amendment.
Yes. Burton.
Yes.
Carey.
Yes.
Sweeten.
Yes.
McCormick.
Yes.
Now we need to make you.
Now we need to move to, go into executive session.
Okay, I make the motion, we go ahead and do the thing. So was that our second? Oh, Lord.
Hockabye.
Yeah.
Burton.
Yes.
Carey.
Yes.
Sweeten.
Yes.
McCormick.
Yes.
Um, sudden, we're gonna go back here instead of.
Yes.
We're gonna use your officers.
Yeah, I meant what I.
Uh, hang on a minute, well, yeah, okay, I'll second that.
Hockabye.
Yes.
Burton.
Yes.
Carey.
Yes.
Sweeten.
Yes.
McCormick.
Yes. Okay, number eleven, discuss and vote on annual performance review and pay increase for city employee. Okay, who do we, who do we wanna do first?
I'll make the motion that we.
This is KPWA side, isn't it?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, we're finishing out the KPWA before we go back to the.
So do we gotta do all of my KPWA, or?
Just KPWA or funds, yeah.
It'd be Doug, Doug, and Cheryl. Hourley on her, or Hourley, yeah.
Uh, anybody second that? I'll second it.
Hockabye.
Yes.
Burton.
Yes.
Carey.
Yes.
Sweeten.
Yes.
McCormick.
Yes.
You can make it through.
Where do we do that one?
She not gonna be talking tomorrow, she ain't gonna be talking tomorrow, so this too, you be coming here to talk to you tomorrow? Hot spice cider with a taste of the honey in it, I give that to her cups of it.
Number twelve, discuss and vote on ninety day performance for city employees. Oh, eleven.
Number nine.
Yeah, we amended that one, not yet, uh, we.
It says city, so we're gonna have to amend it for it to say KPWA, to vote on it.
Uh, we'll be amended by, concerning KPWA, striking.
Number eleven.
It'll be eleven, twelve, and thirteen, we'll have to do that on.
We gotta do it on all three of them.
So you're amending, uh, okay, so one of the.
From city to KPWA side.
KPWA, okay.
I thought we just voted on that.
Number eleven.
It says city instead KPWA, and we're on KPWA side.
So, mark through all these, but KPWA only twenty-one?
We'll have to do separate amounts on all lines.
Okay, who put it on, or like? It was accident.
Yeah, she did go cities to KPWA.
So, you're amending number eleven.
Yes.
And twelve.
And thirteen.
But we'll have to do them separately.
But we gotta do them separately though.
We can't do them all at the same time. Okay.
So, we're making the motion to amend.
I make the motion that we amend it to say KPWA. Number eleven.
Yes.
And Junie, you seconded it. No, Dawn did, duty.
Yeah.
She just made the motion.
I made the motion.
This is confusing.
We gotta straighten down.
Call roll.
Call roll, Matt.
Hackete.
Yeah.
Burton.
Yes.
Carey.
Yes.
Sweeten.
Yes.
Yes, number twelve.
Number twelve.
No, number eleven.
You gotta vote.
Sorry.
I vote we go as amended.
Move.
I move that we vote on it as amended.
You're making the motion?
Yes.
Who's gonna second that?
I'll second.
Oh, God, this is. Kaitina.
And Dawn.
Oh, me and Dawn.
You need a dog.
We're confused yet, hang around.
Now you can call roll.
Me call roll.
Hackete.
Yes.
Burton.
Yes.
Carey.
Yes.
Sweeten.
Yes.
McCormick.
Yes.
Okay, now we've got on number twelve, I make the motion that we amended to say KPWA employee.
That's what we just did.
No, that was eleven. Now we're on twelve.
Who seconded it?
I'll second.
Hackete.
Yes.
Burton.
Yes.
Carey.
Yes.
Sweeten.
Yes.
McCormick.
Yes.
Okay, so isn't that a redundancy to the number eleven, thirteen and twelve redundant to eleven?
Well, it's different employees. It's different employees, three different employees. Okay, now I'm gonna make the motion that we uh.
It's all messed up 'cause it should.
We've got it amended. I'm making the motion that we accept the amendment.
We already did that.
No, on twelve we didn't. We did only eleven.
You're gonna have to make the motion to.
Amended.
As amended.
As amended.
As amended, okay.
Not to amend it, as amended.
As amended, that we accept it as amended.
Yes.
Jesus, it's confusing.
Now second it.
Hackete.
Yes.
Burton.
Yes.
Carey.
Yes.
Sweeten.
Yes.
McCormick.
Yes. Okay, number twelve, discuss and vote.
We just finished twelve, that's thirteen now.
Okay, thirteen, discuss and vote on ninety day performance for KP, city employee.
That should be KPWA.
Should be KPWA.
So, we're gonna have to amend.
We're gonna have to amend that, okay.
I make, I make motion we amend it.
I will second.
Hackete.
Yes.
Burton.
Yes.
Carey.
Yes.
Sweeten.
Yes.
McCormick.
Yes.
Now I make a motion as amended.
To accept it as amended, right?
Yes.
Okay, I'll second that.
Hackete.
Yes.
Burton.
Yes.
Carey.
Yes.
Sweeten.
Yes.
McCormick.
Yes.
Now, don't we have to do the increases on the KPWA side?
Now, we gotta go back to number eleven. Discuss and vote on annual performance review and pay increase for KPWA employee.
Dole and whatever that one.
No, you got to vote to, you just voted. To vote on it as amended, you've not actually.
You didn't finish. We already voted to accept it, so on Dole is a dollar an hour.
What about girls, they get paid at half out of one and half out of two?
Share those.
No, we're just doing Doles right now.
We're gonna do one at a time.
Oh, Doles, we're gonna give him a dollar an hour. For sixteen hours of service being here.
Sixteen years.
Sixteen years, I'm sorry, not hours, sixteen. All this, all this.
Yeah.
So, we need to.
He's been here like sixteen years.
Yeah, sixteen years, not sixteen months.
I make the motion that you can.
Uh, I second that motion. I ain't got nowhere else to write.
Yes, number eleven.
Hackete.
Yes.
Burton.
Yes.
Carey.
Yes.
Sweeten.
Yes.
McCormick.
Yes. Alright, number twelve, discuss and vote on ninety day performance for KPWA employee.
Okay, now this will be Doug's, correct?
Yes, this'll be Doug's.
He's been here like ten years, eleven, twelve years?
Been here twelve years.
Yeah, he gets out streets and alleys and uh, water.
So, that'll be fifty cents out of one, fifty cents out of the other one.
Right.
That's fifty cents for KPWA, right?
Yeah.
I make a motion that.
That's not how you need to work.
I'll second it.
Yeah. That's not how you need to work.
No.
You need to work at a dollar an hour raise and then his time is split fifty percent.
Yes.
Done with a dollar an hour?
Yeah.
And they don't put in forty hours unless it's emergency.
No.
They do not put in.
You work how many hours a week?
Thirty-two hours.
Thirty-two. Thirty-two.
Unless they get called out on.
Unless there's a emergency of some kind, pump station or.
This is for two years.
Yeah, this is it, two years, 'cause nobody's got a home left.
Okay, we need to go on that one.
Okay, I will make the motion that we uh, we do this.
Second it.
I will, I made the motion. You wanna second it?
I did, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, got it.
Hackete.
Yeah.
Burton.
Yes.
Carey.
Yes.
Sweeten.
Yes.
McCormick.
Yes. Number thirteen, discuss and vote on ninety day performance for KPWA employee. Alright, this'll be.
This'll be Sharon.
And we're gonna give her uh, twenty-five cents an hour raise and we're gonna bump her up on city clerk. Okay.
That's on that side. She gonna get twenty-five cents an hour raise on the.
Who is?
KPWA, Sharon is.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
I make the motion that we.
I second that.
Hackete.
Yes.
Burton.
Yes.
You have to.
Sweeten.
Yes.
McCormick.
Yes. Okay, number fourteen, discuss and take action on moving AC unit. We have got to get it done because the roof leaks and we are having resilient piles falling.
Well, this is settled and just you need to do it.
We already voted on it.
Well, we still never did get any.
I put that on us and bring it back because we gotta get.
Do it. We have never gotten any uh, bids on it or anybody.
We got two bids on it.
We got bids too.
We got bids from Charles Ross and a guy that came down from the Muskogee area.
And then we got one from uh.
Yeah, I think there was a third one too.
It was.
Don Davis.
I don't know.
Yeah.
Don Davis come down and.
Little dog come, but he comes sight unseen.
He comes sight unseen and he was.
He quoted it and then he said no.
No.
And you might say if he wasn't in it.
The bids that we had, I've been in our business in Houston, they're a big company. One of them was too high and one was too low. The one that, the particular bid, he cannot do it for the price of the.
He's hot for it, yeah. No, he quoted a very, very low price. There's no way you can even get materials in it. And Adam was way, way, way higher.
That's the guy who saw it solid.
Yeah.
But I mean, at this point, I mean, I guess it's up to you guys just to choose and get it done.
Well, I make a motion, we take some bids then.
Oh, you're.
Take the bid.
If it. We've already got the money, though.
Some of them, I guess.
We've got.
But that's what you were saying, we already had to put back.
Yeah, the eighteen hundred dollars from the interest is still in the general fund account and plus I've got some money put back in the general fund account, even though I don't split four of those actually.
But we don't know how much more we're gonna need.
Right, you got to have a bid, you got somebody.
Uh, so Kaitina, you wanna make the motion that we re-accept bids?
Yeah.
Okay, well, I'll second that then.
Hackete.
Yes.
Burton.
Yes.
Carey.
Yes.
Sweeten.
Yes.
McCormick.
Yes.
How do you do that? Do you rather have the paper, sticker paper?
Yeah, we'll have to.
Yeah, that is done this week.
We need to go ahead and get our, we can go ahead and try to get our bids.
Right.
Okay, number fifteen, no business.
What are we gonna need to do?
I don't know, gonna need to vote to put it in the newspaper. We know we're gonna have to do this.
Yeah.
The bids. Yeah, you do. But I mean, we don't have to vote to do that.
So, let me, somebody in the audience, so we've got new leaks back here by this door right here. Does that mean we need to make another insurance claim on this side?
They don't pay it though. That's the whole reason we didn't get enough money is.
I mean.
They didn't, the Tampa Piova did not do maintenance work on the roof all of those years and they were only paying on some damage that was done. From something and they'll be paid like a small amount. There's not gonna pay for that because that's just.
That's more damage from the originals.
Right.
I mean, I don't know why. No, I mean, you turn in insurance claim and all they do is say no.
And they will, and then they up your interest because you.
It is, it truly is on that. If they tore this building down in the first place when it burned and rebuilt a building, a metal building.
Alright, number sixteen, new business.
I don't know, well, I have a question. Actually, it's gonna be in here and it's about closing down some awful. And our water and everything. You shut down for the holidays, y'all shut down for, I mean, it's a fur for me because when I moved here, it was on the twenty-seventh of December. I could get nothing turned on because nobody was available. I didn't know where to go.
Yeah, it changed. All you gotta do is get off the dug.
When you're new, you don't know this. Yeah, but how would I know to come here and look on the door? I call and nobody answers. I know you're close, so why would I come to the door and look? So, that's why I, I am a big, I hate that you shut down for two weeks at a time so everybody had vacation all at the same time. I mean, I.
I holidays anyway, I.
I do, I, sometimes I love them and I hate them at the same time. Cause I come back to big messes too when I take vacation time. But I, I do hate the fact that y'all shut down for a week and a half this time. That time that happened to me, it was over five years ago. It was two, almost a month it was shut down. So, I had to wait a long time to get my water turned on so I can move into my home.
Well, we, we cut down a lot, lot this time. We didn't stay closed there as long as what.
A week and a half you were shut down, ten days. We were shut down and that's not acceptable, am I right?
No.
You should not be shutting down that long.
Number seventeen, adjourn.
I'm moving to adjourn.
I second.
We couldn't vote on anything, that's just a section on yours. That's why I said, they need to.
I would like, yeah, I really had someone put that on the agenda to be.
Yes.
Burton.
Yes.
Carey.
Yes.
Sweeten.
Yes.
Okay, now, yours uh, it is uh. Seven forty-six. Uh, January thirteenth, two thousand twenty.
Bill, I'll see you when.
Okay. Go ahead and call roll.
Burton.
Yes.
Carey.
Yes.
Alright, we already done the. Discuss and, number four, discuss and approve all ads for December twelve, two thousand nineteen.
Okay, I'll see them. I make a motion that we approve them.
Hackete.
Yes.
Burton.
Yes.
Carey.
Yes.
Sweeten.
Yes.
McCormick.
Yes. Number five, discuss and approve December two thousand nineteen bills for general fund.
I make a motion, we approve those?
Yeah, I'll look them over then.
Uh, you gonna second it?
Hackete.
Yes.
Burton.
Yes.
Carey.
Yeah.
Sweeten.
Yes.
McCormick.
Yes. Number six, discuss and approve December two thousand nineteen bills for street and alley fund.
I make a motion, we pay those.
Hackete.
Yes.
Burton.
Yes.
Carey.
Yes.
Sweeten.
Yes.
McCormick.
Yes. Number seven, discuss and vote to terminate the agreement with Will McCary for the land of. Of course, uh, water waste project.
I'm moving to terminate the agreement.
Shouldn't be on county of.
Yeah, we don't need to take nothing on that one because everything's on KPWA side.
Take no action, okay.
Uh, number eight, vote to go, vote to go in executive session.
We forgot one a little bit.
Yeah, we forgot one a little bit.
What?
We forgot the boy who wanted them.
Take that, but yeah, we're gonna take.
Call roll.
Hackete.
Yes.
Burton.
Yes.
Oh, Carey.
Yes.
Sweeten.
Yes.
McCormick.
Yes. We'll be back. Alright, we'll go back and.
Make the motion, we go back in session.
Yeah, the number nine, vote to go back in.
You second it?
Hackete.
Yes.
Burton.
Yes.
Carey.
Only that's hopefully.
Sweeten.
Yes.
McCormick.
Yes. Alright, uh, we just went back in here and we forgot one boy, a little bit. So, that's what we was doing. Number ten, discuss and vote on annual performance review, pay increase for city employee. And for Dole.
Dole don't count. This is just Sharon, city clerk, and Joyce.
Yeah.
Well, who we gonna start out with?
Just start out with Sharon.
Just Sharon's.
Okay, do Sharon's first.
Um, first of all, number ten, he made the motion for the reviews and pay increase.
Dawn made the motion.
Dawn.
I will second it then.
Hackete.
Yes.
Burton.
Yes.
Carey.
Yes.
Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute. Okay.
Sweeten.[1710.74] Sweeten.
Yes.
McCormick.
Yes.
Can you second that?
Yes.
Sorry, guys, trying to get this.
Okay.
Number...
We still on the end, ain't we?
Now we just voted on it, now we go number eleven.
Number eleven.
Okay.
This'll be Sharon's. Discuss and vote on ninety day performance for city employee. Uh, uh, then we're gonna raise...
It's over money, but...
Yeah, we're gonna raise, we're gonna raise her city clerk. Pay.
By fifty, right?
Yeah, by fifty.
I just said ten was Sharon. I did too.
Those doles.
Ten, ten was us.
Oh, that was just a vote on it.
Awesome.
You got one. Did anybody second it?
Okay, number eleven, discuss and vote on ninety day performance, that's for sure. And...
Hannah made the motion?
I will.
I'll second it then.
Huckabee.
Yeah.
Burton.
Yes.
Carey.
Yes.
Sweeten.
Yes.
McCormick.
Yes. Number twelve, discuss and vote on ninety day performance for city employee.
Now who's this one?
This is Joyce.
Joyce. Uh, yeah, we voted on yours, I'll make the motion.
We, we raised her up another hundred.
I was gonna say, you're not...
Dawn, you second it?
You're not supporting it, right?
No, she's...
Huckabee.
Yes.
Burton.
Yes.
Carey.
Yes.
Sweeten.
Yes.
McCormick.
Yes. Number thirteen, discuss and take...
Hold on a second, I wanna say one thing. Cheryl didn't get a raise and it's not because she's a bad employee, she...
She declined it.
She declined it.
It's not that we didn't offer it, she declined it.
We offered it, but she just complained and said no.
She's a very...
It was, it's under, when we hired her, she wanted to have the ability to take off when she wanted, if everything's called up, she doesn't stay in the town for any money.
Cool, thank you.
Last half a month is pretty boring up here, so...
She don't like getting bored, so she leaves.
And Sharon's...
And I don't see for long, so as long, I, I like the flexibility, so I turned down...
But if she gets, but if she gets busy, Sharon knows to call her.
Probably live a walk and a half down here.
Okay. Number thirteen, discuss and take action on raising fines for dogs running loose.
No.
I'm on the wrong line.
Dole.
No.
Yes. Not all these dogs belong to somebody, I'm telling you. People's bringing dogs and dumping them in this town. I saw three skinny humps of it.
They only get a fine when they actively claim it or actively known to be their dog.
Oh, yeah.
Well, I was wondering who, who in the heck...
So...
That one is telling on these two.
Nobody...
Oh, no.
What is it right now, lanes?
It's too low, it's only sixty, sixty dollars.
Yeah.
For the fine, for one.
I'm writing the same people multiple times. It goes, uh, it goes sixty, eighty, a hundred.
A hundred.
Each time.
I think it needs to start at a hundred and then go to like one twenty-five and then one fifty.
There might keep them, they're gonna keep their dogs up.
And these people are piking the dogs.
Yes.
They are piking their dogs.
So it's not, it's...
They're, they're aware of it, they, they know, but yet they still do it and there's no deterrent at the price of his...
We need to make it cheaper for them to put them up instead of paying the fine.
Yes.
I agree. That one fence, if it ain't fixed, it ain't giving nothing to us.
No, the pony left tracks on the yard.
The pony's been all over tail.
One other thing with that is, is that, uh, the dogs are supposed to be tagged and vaccinated.
They're getting roped for that too.
He's riding a muck of that too, so...
Is that, is that included in that price?
No, may call.
No, that's separate tag.
Uh, I'd have to look, I think the rabies vaccine's like one, a hundred, ain't it?
Uh, I think that's what you said.
One is a hundred fifty, isn't it?
That's the...
Your question.
That is the rabies vaccine.
Yeah, rabies vaccine, I think it's a hundred fifty.
And the shitty tags, a hundred. And then the, running it large, you're sixty.
Oh, yeah, it's...
That's not if you come to tag your dog like you're supposed to.
But mine are good. I mean, I don't know, we were flat out told you when you moved in. They can poison it, they can shoot your dog. I can poison something. Don't do it, every day.
If he finds them in there, the price...
I thought maybe he thought that was the price for Gila tag.
Everybody made a difference, let's, let's roll with it.
Make the motion that we raise it to...
I think it's some special...
You making these dogs, you pay the fine.
He said? Are they paying the fines? Or Cheryl, I guess, would pay it. Are they paying the fines when you're running them for dogs at large?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We haven't had one person not pay the fine.
But I think this'll determine...
They don't jump to court.
So move it to a hundred, what'd you say?
Hundred, one twenty, five, and one fifty.
I mean, literally, they do not show up to court.
No, they don't, they just come to pay.
Is it like one hundred for the least dog? No.
No, it's each card.
One hundred for the first time, one hundred twenty-five for the second.
Okay, that's one.
One fifty for the third.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
Yes.
Burton.
Yes.
Carey.
Yes.
Sweeten.
I guess.
Yes. Okay, number fourteen, discuss and take action on removing AC unit.
So what are we gonna put?
The same thing we did on...
Dawn and the main.
Yes.
Burton.
Yes.
Carey.
Yes.
Sweeten.
Yes.
McCormick.
Yes. Okay, number fifteen, no business. Sixteen, new business.
I am to bring up again about closing down for the city for the ten days when it necessary, if I got petition of people who are just not happy about it, but that sway you guys to not allow it to be shut down more than for ten, twelve days in a row. We've done it.
We were actually, so the twenty-fourth and the twenty-fifth was a Tuesday and Wednesday, so we're off that. And then so we took the Thursday, well, no Friday.
You're closed on Fridays.
Right, closed on Fridays.
Took the Thursday.
So we took the Thursday and then we took the Monday and then the Tuesday and then New Year's Day was a holiday. And then January second, we were back. So we took three extra days off.
Yes, but you still, again, when you shut down a town and you're shutting down...
Would it help if we would put it on the answering machine, the number to locate someone if, you know, when they call up?
Yeah, we put it on the door.
The, no, don't putting it on the door doesn't matter. I mean, if I run into that problem, somebody else is gonna run into it and you don't wanna alienate new people into our town.
Because we do have the answering machine.
If you have an answering machine when you leave, you can put it down.
We could actually put on the answering machine and on the door.
I even put it on Facebook. When Facebook come up and y'all put it on there and it showed up on me, I asked a question and never got a response. So, it wasn't even put on Facebook that you can contact Doug or anything, because I asked. So there's nothing out there.
Actually, I did put it on the Facebook.
Well, I didn't see it later.
Yeah, it was on there and I put it on there also.
Well, that's maybe I, I didn't see it, I mean, it took too long to respond back, I guess, but...
But that helped as far as what you're talking about.
Yes, it would be immense help. Because when they call, they'll know, hey, we're shut down, you can contact this number.
Right.
Be great.
Okay.
At least I have some resolution, I'm whining every year about it.
Okay, number seventeen, that's the charity thing.
I make... We make the motion that we...
Dawn bait me.
Dawn bait you? No, I'll say it. Oh, you say it, alright.
Call roll.
I'm ready to watch the podcast.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
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 I gotta go to, I gotta go ahead and...
Be careful, Doc.